The Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you would now, please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call, please, Beth.
Grandquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Weeblehouse?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change, and request to remove item number 19 from the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion with the noted change.
A motion and second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
But then look for a motion to consider the full agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion and second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
That moves us to the public hearings and related action portion of the agenda, item number 27. I will open this public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by state statutes section 18-2715. And to begin the discussion, Randy, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Statutes require a Citizens Advisory Review Committee, or CARC. The citizens serving on City's CARC are Sandy Morrow, Jim Mangels, Aaron Otten, Jan Heinspar, and Kathy Means. I also serve as an ex-officio non-voting member. Statutes require the CARC to meet at least once every six months and report to the city council on its findings and suggestions at a public hearing called for that purpose. CARC met on June 4th, and the CARC's report, which includes the CARC's review checklist, is included in the agenda packet. There were four items on the CARC's agenda for the June 4th meeting. The first was review of the city's current funding for the Economic Development Fund, and the committee reviewed the financial statements from November 2018 to April 2019. Revenues are coming in as expected, and the only expenditure was the normal interest payment of $18,225. As of the end of April, the Economic Development Fund had over $600,000 of cash. The second item on the agenda was the update on Conity Tech. Conity Tech is not moving forward the expansion they had planned due to global economic conditions and construction costs coming in significantly higher than they had originally budgeted. Conity Tech is not pursuing the $180,000 of LBA 40 funds, or $700,000 of community development block grant funding, and $300,000 of site and building development funding from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. Even though they're not going forward with their planned expansion, they are investing in additional equipment and adding 30 jobs. Stat provided the CARC and Economic Development update and discussed the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation purchase of 140 acres in southwest Norfolk to establish a business park for light industry and heavy commercial uses. The city provided $300,000 of keynote funds to assist with purchase of the land, and the foundation has hired an engineer, and is now doing master's site planning. The city also supplied for a USDA rural business development grant to establish revolving loan fund. This revolving loan fund would assist small and emerging businesses. The grant is for $75,000. If awarded, will provide a $75,000 match with LBA 40 funds. And finally, the CARC found that the city's economic development program is operating in compliance with the budget, and the voter-approved economic development plan. That answer any questions?
Okay, thank you. Randy, any questions? One thing I get questions about sometimes are available resources for small business development, and I think the last item you talked about is an important development in that regard, the USDA revolving loan fund, and how that came about, and I don't know, Andy, if you want to comment on that, but I think it's something that maybe didn't get a lot of headlines, but can be important for small business development in the area moving forward.
Sure, Mayor. Yes, you are correct. We hope to hear whether or not we're successful on that grant here within the next month or so. Sometimes those wheels will turn a little slow depending on the timeframes that they would like versus what we would like, but we do hope to hear pretty soon. And everything we've heard so far in discussions with the staff is that our application did meet all their expectations and requirements they need to have for the grant funding. So, no reason to believe we wouldn't get funding, but of course, you never know until you actually are awarded. But yes, that grant would be designed to provide some gap financing. So, say if there's a small business entrepreneur that wants to start a business of some kind, was missing a little bit of financing in the middle to get full bank financing that they're looking for, whether it's for some equipment they want to add, just an overall part of their project, or a piece of property, or buy an asset of some kind, we can help put in a loan for that one to help bridge that gap and provide some extra collateral as they're getting their private financing. That's what it's designed for. So, we're not talking large amounts of money, but to a small business, sometimes a little bit can really go a long way, which is the goal of that grant.
I think that's good work. A lot of times, in terms of business incentives, we get caught up in policy discussions about big businesses and what governments are willing to give away to big business, but I think it's important that we also remember that entrepreneurs and small business development is just as or probably more important to the local economy. It's good work. Any other questions, comments, council on the CARC review? This is a public hearing, so anyone from the public wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll move to close the hearing and move to item 28. We'll open this public hearing at the request of New King LLC to consider a hard-surfacing waiver at 4608 South 25th Street. And to open the discussion, Val, could you give us some background, please?
Yes, thank you. This is New, uh, sorry, King Steel down on South 25th Street. They are doing an expansion with their building, and so they are required to do paving then, and their north entrance, they have a south and a north entrance. They're asking to not pave the northern entrance, which there are two resolutions attached to the agenda like we did last time. One gives the full paving waiver, and if you decide to go with version A, then you would need to put a year or an indefinite time period on that. The Planning Commission recommended a 100-foot pavement off of the paved 25th Street, and then they can do the gravel thereon. So that would be version B if you choose to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Val? Comments from the public? Can I ask a public hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the discussion, and Planning Commission report, please, Beth.
On June 4th, 2019, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the application for modification of hard-surfacing requirements submitted by NU King LLC. The application submitted following City Code 27351 is requested for property at 4608 South 25th. The motion to approve the hard-surfacing waiver request with the exemption to hard-surface the north Egress Drive from South 25th Street, a minimum distance of 100 feet, was approved by Planning Commission with an 8-0 vote.
Thank you, Beth. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 29. We'd look for a motion to consider resolution number 2019-35, approving the hard-surfacing waiver for NU King LLC at 4608 South 25th Street.
Your Honor, I'd move for consideration of resolution number 2019-35, version B.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, motion and second for version B, which is the resolution before us. Correct, Val? That was approved by the Planning Commission. Any further discussion on this, council? Comments? If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 201935, version B, is adopted.
Item number 30. We'll open this public hearing at the request of HH Hall Management Corporation to consider a zoning change from R2, 1 and 2 family residential district, to C1, local business district, on property addressed as 1229 West Pazwalk Avenue. And to kick off discussion, again, Val, please.
Thank you. This is the vacant lot just to the east bordering Burger King at 13th and Pazwalk. It would be Burger King, a vacant lot, and then a parking lot to the east of that. Currently, it is R2. They are requesting C1, and comp plan does call for that corridor right off of Pazwalk and 13th to be commercial, so it would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan if you so choose. And there is a representative here tonight if you have questions.
So, Val, how far does the comp plan go in as far as the C zoning, or C?
I believe it goes about halfway down that block because it would go to where the parking lot currently is, is where the comp plan shows it to, because then there's two houses, I believe, at the end of that block still.
Thank you.
And for public record, Val, there was some additional discussion on this during Planning Commission about potential uses. We are not taking that up here tonight. We are simply considering the zoning change request, correct?
Correct. At Planning Commission, there was the zone change and a conditional use permit, and you are only taking up the zone change, yes.
Okay. Other comments? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Hearing no one. Planning Commission report, please, Beth.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 4th, 2019, at the request of HH Hall Management Corporation to consider a zoning change from R2, 1 and 2 single, 1 and 2 family residential district to C1, local business district, on property at 1229 West Pazwalk. The Planning Commission recommends approval on an 8-0 vote.
With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 31. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5619, approving a zoning change from R2 to C1 on property addressed as 1229 West Pazwalk Avenue.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5619. Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Questions, comments, council? None. Short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5619 carries on
With that, we'll move to item number 32. I will open this public hearing at the request of Bowdy and Heather Ott to consider a zoning change from RR Rural Residential District and A Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District on property addressed as 55928-843rd Road. And again, Val, to open the discussion, please.
Thank you. This is actually, 843rd Road is Benjamin Avenue. They are just to the east of Eastwood in Stanton County, close to our jurisdictional ETJ line. They are still 843rd Road because that is where the intersection, they decided at Eastwood and Benjamin, that the west half is Benjamin and it is paved, and the east side of Eastwood is still 843rd Road, like the county, and it is still gravel. What happened, why this came to our attention, is it kind of goes into the next couple items also, but when land comes into our jurisdiction from the county through annexation and the expansion of ETJ, we go to the quarter-quarter lines, and the chart is in our zoning code that talks if the zoning is one thing in the county, it comes in automatically as a certain zoning to the city. And this property is actually cut in about a third and two-thirds because the quarter-quarter line split their property. And so on one part of it is zoned RR, and the other part is ag. So you would be cleaning up their property. That's why it's kind of written strangely that it's ag and RR, 2RR is the request. And if the RR goes tonight, then the following ones, they would like to do a plat potentially out there in a RR zoning. So, if you have any questions.
So, Val, we would essentially be unifying the same zoning classification for this entire property, is that right?
Right. So they wouldn't have two zonings on one parcel.
Okay. Any questions, comments? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing and hearing no one. Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 4th, 2019, at the request of Bowdy and Heather Ott to consider a zoning change from RR Rural Residential and A Agricultural to RR Rural Residential on property at 55928-843rd Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval on an 8-0 vote.
Beth, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 33. We'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5620, approving a zoning change from RR and A to RR on property addressed as 55928-843rd Road.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5620 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Council, comments? If none, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All councilmen present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5620 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, since this is an ordinance that really cleans up the area there, I move that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5620 carries on second and third.
Item number 34. We'd look for a motion to consider resolution number 2019-36, approving the final plat and subdivision agreement of Ott addition.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second that, Your Honor.
Motion and second. Val, please.
This would be the same property that you just voted the zone change on. What this plat is requesting is, it's about a 20-acre parcel, and they want to keep about 15 acres with the existing house and split off another parcel of about five acres to put another house on for the son, I believe.
Thank you, Val. Any questions, comments, council? If no further discussion, Planning Commission report, please, Beth.
On June 4th, 2019, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the final plat of Ott addition. All items required for the final plat approved had been submitted and viewed by the city engineer, and the Planning Commission recommended approval on an 8-0 vote.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 201936 is adopted.
Item 35. We'd look for a motion to consider resolution number 2019-37, approving a sidewalk waiver for Ott addition in Stanton County.
Your Honor, I'd move for consideration of resolution 2019-37. Second that.
Okay, motion and second. And Val, can you give us some context on the sidewalk waiver request?
Again, this is the same piece of property we've been talking about. It is along a gravel road. It is the unpaved section of Benjamin Avenue, and they are requesting to not put in sidewalks at this time if they do build a house on that newly formed lot. And they're requesting it for the addition for both of those lots instead of just the one-flag lot. And it's the standard language that if you grant it, you can order it in at any time.
Okay. Val, can you give us some background on the Planning Commission discussion on this aspect of it?
Planning Commission gave approval of it because it is along an unpaved road, and there are not any sidewalks close by out there.
Okay. Any questions, comments, council? Okay. Planning Commissioner report, please, Beth.
On June 4th, 2019, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the application for waiver of subdivision regulations submitted by Bowdy Ott. The waiver of minimum subdivision sidewalk requirements is requested from those set out in chapter 23 to 42 of City Code. The Planning Commission recommends approval on an 8-0 vote.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 201937 is adopted.
Okay, that moves us to our regular agenda, item number 36. We entertain a motion to consider approval for the mayor to execute a letter to the Nebraska Environmental Trust stating the city's commitment to participate in the 2020 funding request of the Nebraska Community Energy Alliance.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. And Steve, could you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, Mayor, council members. A couple months ago, you approved the city becoming a member of the Nebraska Environmental, or the Nebraska Energy Alliance Coalition. Since then, we've had a couple meetings and are preparing for our next grant, Grants Right. As a function of that and working with the other members, we have come up with a list of requests for the grants for the city of Norfolk. Those grants include two electric vehicles. The grant would cover $32,000 of that, of the cost, and the city would have the match for that $32,000. Currently, those two vehicles are plugged into our budget planning session. One for, would be here at City Hall for engineering use as well as other use, and the other one right now is plugged in out at WPC. In addition to the two vehicles, is infrastructure related to charging. There'll be a charger for each vehicle. Total request for grants is $7,210. Half of that is from the NET, and half of that is from NDEQ. That's 7210, 7210 is total for each of the 4,021-series charging stations, so there'd be two of those. The NDEQ grant would be 7210, and an NET grant would be 7210. So our cost associated with this would strictly be the installation cost. Visiting with other communities that are in the Coalition, the cost range quite substantially anywhere from about $150 to $2,500, just depends on where you want to put it and where the electrical connection would be to get to from there. So, right now, we're budgeting towards the higher end of that, just not knowing exactly where those might go. The second charger is a CPE250. That is a charger that would be open for public use. The current thought for that would be to put that over to the library for people that are coming into town. They could stop over at the library and charge up. It's about an hour charge on the CPE250. And again, installation cost, visiting with other communities that have put those in, it's about $20,000, $25,000 for installation on that. It is a three, does take a three-phase connection, so it's a little bit more expensive. And again, depending on where you install that in relation to the power needs, the cost can vary. Finally, the city of Norfolk is part of a super, I shouldn't use "supercharger," that is proprietary, but an express charger system that would be located here in the community, be part of kind of people that have EVs and are moving across the state and need to stop and do a quick charge. This would give you about 20 minutes for a full charge. So if you're coming up from Omaha, headed north, you could stop here in Norfolk in about 20 minutes, get a full charge, and then go on from there. That charger is a total of $102,000. And again, we're requesting a $51,000 grant from NDEQ and a $51,000 grant from the Nebraska Environmental Trust. So those grants would cover the cost of the equipment, and we would have the cost of the installation. And again, it would be similar to the other one, somewhere in that $26,000 range, just depending on location of the three-phase. The exact location of that has not been determined, which is not uncommon with our other communities that are part of this group. If for some reason we were approved with the grant and we just didn't have a location for this, we would make that charger available to some of the other cities within the Alliance. We're thinking potentially downtown on River Point Square Project. We are looking at another potential site here in the community that would have three-phase in proximity as well. Both for those, those public chargers have to be located on city-owned property, so somewhere within our right-of-way or a parking lot that we would own. Any questions about the two grants? This is two grants that we're writing for here.
So the only expense we'd have would be installation?
The only cost we would have would be the half-cost of each of the vehicles, and then the installation cost for the chargers.
Steve, what's the life expectancy of a charger like that?
Councilman, I don't have a good answer for that question. These more expensive ones have charger blocks, so if something goes bad, it's going to be that block, and you pull that block out and put a new block in. Beyond that, I don't, I don't have a really good answer for you.
And is there a payback to them, then?
Typically, what's going on out there right now is we come up with a way to charge for the connection. So some of the cities are charging a connection fee and then an hourly rate to be connected or parked in that stall.
And then is that, I'm assuming that's something that's kind of electronic? I mean, it's swiping a card, or?
It is. It's a card swipe, a charge card swipe. It's all, it is also connected to the internet, and it's connected to a cellphone app. So you'll know when your, when your car's charged. It'll send you a note that your car's charged. Since it is connected to the internet, that's how EV vehicles find those chargers. So they'll, anybody that's in an EV will know, you know, there's a charger at the library if that's where that one goes, or there's a charger somewhere else here in town.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So what do you estimate the total cost for us?
I think the total cost for us, obviously, the two vehicles are going to cost us $32,000, $16,000 apiece, half, roughly half. The charger installs about $26,000 for two, plus another maybe $5,000. So we're in that mid-50.
So again, Steve, the vehicles are scheduled within department needs, right? It's not like because we have this, we're going out to purchase.
Correct. So this would be, this would be replacing a vehicle need within the department. The other thing to note, too, is, you know, for the vehicle side and the charger that goes with the vehicle, you're still less than buying a V- goes with the vehicle, you're still less than buying a vehicle between the charger and the, and the share for the car. So it's, like I say, yes, it's just going to replace an existing.
As opposed to going out and purchasing a conventional vehicle, right?
Have they had any idea, I mean, what's the life longevity on these vehicles?
The batteries are what's going to go out. I'm not sure what current, current industry is. Some of them that have been out there for the last two or three years, battery warranty is running around a hundred thousand miles. When it comes time to buy the vehicle, there's not a fixed vehicle. We go out locally, as locally as, as we can get to find a vehicle. So I would assume through Ford, through Nissan, through Chevy, any of those organizations that have an, an EV vehicle, and we can go get a quote from, decide which way to go. But it's, it's a local purchase.
So I understand how they, how you swipe your card or get it off the internet or any, you know, all that. I get that. But what's, what's it cost to charge a vehicle?
I know one community's charging, it was four dollars to connect, and then it was about six dollars, six to eight dollars per hour.
Per hour, okay. And you can charge it in twenty minutes or an hour?
The big, the big one's about twenty minutes. The smaller one's about an hour, hour and a half.
Okay. So a ten-dollar bill, and you're, you're on the road again. Okay. And the cost of these things is, again, our?
The chargers themselves?
Yeah, our, our portion of that is what, again?
Purchasing, purchasing them is, there's no cost to us. That's covered via grant. The installation cost is about twenty-six thousand apiece for the two bigger chargers and somewhere around a thousand to two thousand dollars for the smaller chargers.
And, Steve, the larger chargers are part of a, a network, a statewide network effort, correct? Because we are not the only city in this alliance. There are several other Nebraska communities.
Yeah, there's about thirty-six communities in the alliance.
Yeah. And I think specifically, we're on the Highway eighty-one corridor, in which there are chargers in York and Columbus.
That's correct.
And potentially Norfolk.
I think there's two or three chargers, the, the express chargers out there. There's probably about twelve communities across the state that are looked at as part of this statewide charging network to be eligible for the grant. We're, they're, they're not really interested in just giving every city a grant to these bigger, bigger chargers. They want those strategically state placed across the state.
So we need somewhere in the vicinity of six thousand charges to pay for, at ten bucks a month?
Yes.
Over the course of?
I see what you're saying.
Several years. So it's really, I mean, in my mind, it's really doable, I think.
I think so. With the grant, yes.
Trending in that direction, so.
Yeah.
I was just trying to get a, just trying to get a handle on what the, how many years it might take to, to pay that back. But I think it sets us off in the right direction.
And the way those, and the way that EV vehicles work is you don't drive it till it's empty and then fill up. You might end up stranded somewhere. So when you stop, you want to drive and stop and, and top off. It's a top-off concept. So, you know, for the two vehicles that we would have here at City Hall, are part of the city, when they're not being driven, they're actually plugged in so that they stay at a hundred percent charge.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the way things are going, electric vehicles are not going away.
No.
They'll become more and more common, and to prepare to have the right infrastructure in place to accommodate them, not only for local users, but for people coming through town. Strategically locating chargers in our downtown and encouraging people to get out and see what Norfolk has to offer, I think it's a smart idea. So, doing this and leveraging available grants to pay for most of it, I think it's pretty. Any other questions?
Can't borrow money that cheap.
That's right. Anything to add?
I'll just ask one more, since I asked on what our cost is. What, what did the total grant come to? If we got awarded all these, obviously, it seems to me like it's three times higher than what our cost or?
Our total, our total, so we've got thirty-two thousand plus, thirty-two thousand plus one sixty-eight. So we're right up against two hundred thousand dollars in grant requests. So it's?
That fifty-eight thousand, we're talking as two cars plus two chargers on our cost to install, right? Chargers roughly are thirteen thousand apiece to install?
We'd have to, we'd have to install all four chargers.
Oh, there's four. I miscounted that.
Yeah, so the, the two big three-phase chargers are about twenty-six thousand apiece to install.
I got you.
The smaller ones, a couple thousand apiece to install.
Okay, thank you.
The total grant that's being requested is, I'll give you just an idea of what, so what the entire alliance is requesting, is about two-point-three million.
And the grant sources are Nebraska Environmental Trust Fund.
And Nebraska Department of Environmental?
DQ.
DQ.
All right. Any other questions, comments, council? If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Item thirty-seven, I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-six twenty-one annexing land generally located in northeast corner of Thirty-seventh Street and West Omaha Avenue.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-six twenty-one.
Okay, motion and second. And Steve or Andy, some background on this, please?
Thank you, mayor and council. I think Val's bringing up the site that we can all look at here. Well, earlier, Randy had mentioned in the review committee report of a business park, or land for a business park that the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation has recently purchased, and are currently working with Olson Associates that they've hired to do master planning on this site. So, the logical step right now to make sure that we can, it's part of city limits, is to get it annexed and start that process now, so that it is part of the community. So any businesses naturally that would come in the future, infrastructure, things like that, would be part of the city right now before, before we get it, get it planned. So really, this is kind of a housekeeping item, but it's kind of an exciting one, because this is a hundred and forty acres, plus about forty-eight, forty-eight acres of wetland property that the city acquired back in the nineties. So we're also bringing that into city limits as well. It probably should be. But that's going to actually join us to existing city limits. So we're able to meet the state statute for, for defining, expanding the city's boundaries. So the parcel that we're talking about is right at that northeast corner of Thirty-seventh Street and Omaha Avenue. Again, it's about a hundred and forty acres total, and the Greater Norfolk Foundation has purchased that here around February, January, February of this year. They did close on that. The goal of this is to provide a space for not really heavy industry. This isn't, this, this won't be designed for that, but it's more of your medium, low to medium industry, plus some heavy commercial, light commercial, things like that. So the goal is to make this flexible as possible. This is an area that the foundation identified in the community as, as a need. A lot of communities do have a park available through their economic development group, which is primarily the Greater Norfolk Foundation. And so the city's participation in this was to help provide some Keno funding, as Randy had mentioned earlier, to help go towards the acquisition and some of the planning. It could go for one or both of those as part of this, this, this property. So, they, again, they have started that right now. There are a few options that I think we have that, that, that look good for this, that some prospects that we've been kind of talking to here for a while that may fit into here. But again, until we get this master plan, find out what the best fit is, and then we'll have a better idea for infrastructure. But everything so far that we know about the parcel, it's, it's positioned well for infrastructure, transportation, access, all those things. It really does fit the bill. Wetlands are, are few and far between on that overall parcel itself. And so, it's, it was a good fit for economic development for our area. And so this is really the first step to getting the site developed. And for the, the public's reference and for the council's reference, you're going to go down on Thirty-seventh Street at the roundabout. So you're going to be southeast of Fountain Point, which is just, yeah, right there, where the, where the cursor is. So you're south of Dinkles, separated by a parcel there that's owned by another party. So, for your reference, that's, that's where this is. So, with that, this is going to require all three readings by statute. So this is the first reading tonight, and so we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So the, what we're asking is to go right up to Thirty-seventh Street for the city limits?
Yes.
And the, the property right to the west of there is owned by the city, too?
Yes.
Is that?
That's our wellhead area. You know, no, it's something we certainly could look to expand in the future if we wanted to. But right now, there's really no need to, to go further past that, depending on what else would happen in that area in the future. But you're correct, councilman. That is owned by the city if you go further west.
With the annexation, will Omaha Avenue in that section become part of the city, the entire street, then?
For the record, yes. That's helpful. Well, I think is another step in the steady growth and development of that area, the community. And the underlying effort to create the business park was really brought about as another way to focus on small business development, a challenge I know that the economic development team regularly runs into is accommodating interested entrepreneurs and small business people with ready-to-go real estate. And so, you run into this enough times and start to realize that we can do some things to make the environment a little bit better. And this opportunity came to us, and makes a lot of sense. So I think bringing this into the city at this time is the right thing to do, and we're excited to see what is, what can potentially be developed there, so.
I will add, one, one important component to this is for the foundation, their goal is to use proceeds from sales of land and lots within this to then go back, obviously, into the foundation to help generate more funding to, to do this more in the, in the community as well. So that's really the, the primary purpose of the foundation. If you go way back to its first existence, that's why it exists, is to acquire and own property for this purpose. So this was certainly going down the road, will help generate more funding to allow them to do more of this.
This can build on itself.
Andy, any idea how many parcels you hope to get out of that, or that foundation?
You know, I couldn't tell you. I think, just in some conceptual discussions, you know, you could, you could have anything from a two, three acre lot up to five, ten, twenty acre parcel. It's really just going to kind of depend on getting some interested parties involved, maybe early on, and then kind of build around that to kind of engage the interest. But as far as the industries we've run into, as the mayor indicated, that's about the size that, that we struggle with to find land for, is about that medium, small to medium-sized commercial and industrial operations.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Not short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to annex to said city a tract of land lying in the south half of section twenty-nine, the southeast quarter of section thirty, the northeast quarter of section thirty-one, and the north half of section thirty-two, all in Township twenty-four North, range one west of the six PM Madison County, Nebraska. Repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing ordinance being published in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-six twenty-one carries on first reading only.
Okay. Last but not least, we have a time designated for public comment period. If there are any comments from anyone in the public about anything, they can come to us now. Oh, here's crickets. So, all right. With that, we will close out the public comment period and conclude this meeting in the Norfolk City Council. Good evening.